I want to call to order the regular meeting Monday, June 12, 2017. Pledge of Allegiance, Chief, can you lead us please?
Yes.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unguarded, indivisible, liberated, and just as for all.
Thank you, Chief. Roll call.
Tim.
Present.
Tom.
Here.
Patricia.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
And Justin.
The only announcement I've got is we had the Relay for Life in downtown Paintsville on Saturday, and they did meet their goal as far as raising money. That's very important for the research on cancer, and we were extremely proud of them having it in the downtown area this year. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, May 8, 2017.
I'm still moved. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of departmental reports, please.
Motion to approve the departmental reports.
What's up?
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval to pay bills as presented?
Yeah, I don't like to be opposed at first. I just relax me because I'm...
How's that gonna sound?
Jim's my man.
That's my man, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we need to move on to business, and we've got a rather long agenda tonight. For some reason, we're going to start putting a time limit on these. I told Ms. Virgie that I figured what we'd do is we'd have the city council meeting on Monday night and give everybody till noon that next Tuesday to get their things going on the agenda. What do y'all think about that? I'm just kidding, just kidding, just kidding, kidding Ms. Sarah, just kidding.
Run that by me again.
The number one item on the business is to reappoint L.B. LaMasters as a member of the Paintsville Utilities Commission.
I'll make a motion, reappoint L.B. LaMasters on Paintsville Utilities Commission. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need a motion to approve the resolution for the TASER grant application. I'm assuming that's for the police force, correct? Okay?
I don't know. I was gonna ask you, possibly.
I was gonna...
I hope it's not for me.
I was kinda gonna ask you if we could have one. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the TASER grant application.
I'll say, I'll say a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is to open the bids on siren. Do you need to address council on that, or...
The second siren that go, we'll go at the senior citizen center. And I spoke to the virgins, he says we just have one bid, so if you all open that and announce it publicly, I'll review it, and then we can award it before we leave today that meets all the specifications.
So you want to award it now since we got one bid, correct? And this is from Sirens for Cities Incorporated? Is that correct?
Yes.
And the price of that, if I'm reading this right, is seventeen thousand?
Yes.
Zero sixteen sixty-nine?
That sounds about right, yeah.
Is that well within the, what we expected it to be?
Um, this was, uh, we completed our first siren, and we had money left over, and we'll have to have some match, which has already been budgeted, because we knew that if we purchased a second siren, there would be some additional monies that we would have to come up with for the match, but everything seems to be in line. I'm just gonna check to make sure it meets our specifications.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I'm assuming we'll need a bid to approve that?
Just let me review it, and in a few minutes, I'll let you know if it meets, then we can go ahead and...
And so we're gonna put this on hold for just a little while?
Well, unless you can accept it. Is that what he needs, Virgie, a motion just to accept the bid? Is that, okay.
A big thing.
I guess you need that, and then you can award it before we leave here.
One, one motion. One motion to...
Do you guys wanna let her check it first, and then we can come back to it? That's fine, that's fine. Now, we have a first reading of Alcohol Beverage Control Ordinance provisions regarding hours of sale. I'll remind you, this is the first reading. One twenty-one point oh three seven is the number of the ordinance. Ordinance is under KRS two forty-three point oh seven two. Regarding the hours of sale, numbers one-two-one point oh eight oh. Premises for which there has been granted a license for the retail sales of alcoholic beverages shall be permitted to sell or offer for sale alcoholic beverages only between the hours of six a.m. and twelve a.m. each day, Monday through Saturday, and on Sunday, only between the hours of one p.m. and ten p.m., subject to the exceptions set forth in the division below. On each New Year's Eve, December thirty-one, any retail licensee shall be permitted to sell any alcoholic beverages. The licensee is otherwise permitted to sell until the hour of one eight a.m. on January one. That's the provision in that ordinance. The only other provision that was excluded was KRS two four-three point oh three six, which is section F in your ordinance. Do all of you have that?
Yes, sir.
It was right in the back, right in my bag, your package.
Would you like me to read that to you? What has been exempt out of the ordinance? What we will need is a first, or I'm sorry, a motion. We will need a motion plus a second to the first reading, correct, Ms. Virgie?
That's correct.
I'll make a motion. I'll say it's to the first reading.
Do a second.
Okay, so that's all we needed on the first reading, correct?
That's right.
Now, there has been, if I can find it here, Ms. Sarah, I told you I had it. Okay. There has been some question on Sunday sales, and I'm gonna address this first, and I'm gonna let Mr. Lewandowski have a little say in here, and we want everybody to understand that we, this is not a personal or religious issue to us. This is strictly an economical issue. There has been some question on where the ABC tax money goes out in the public. So we have broken down from year 2012 through year-to-date, 2017, so that I can try to explain to you how this money has been spent. I want to apologize to you. I should've done that when I first took this office. As a matter of fact, to be honest with you, it should've, it should've been done years ago, and it never was. You got my apology for that. In 2012, we took in one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and we spent in police salaries and wages, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, two hundred and one. It goes through all these years, up until 2016, we took in a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, and we spent two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in police wages and salaries. Now, the KRS two four-three point oh seven five plainly states, "The revenue received from the imposition of the regulatory license fee shall be spent only to fully reimburse the local government," which is your general fund, "for the estimated cost of any additional policing, regulatory, or administrative expenses related to the sale of alcoholic beverages in the city." So if you look at the difference, that's what you took in in 2016, and what you paid out in salaries and wages, that's a hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar difference. So those, that, those monies are used to buy police cars, safety equipment, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, weapons, you've gotta have ammunition to go in weapons, and fuel for your police department. So I want the public to fully understand that they know now what this money is being spent for.
When it, when it was first enacted, I wasn't on the city council then, and I had truly forgotten exactly how that, how that was set up.
Uh-huh.
And when I asked you about it, and you informed me that that went for police, people had asked, and, and I'm glad you have straightened that up.
Well, I'm, I'm just...
That's, that's really good that you have, and I appreciate it.
I'm just glad you reminded me, because the public needs to understand this. And also, there is another nine thousand dollars of that money that goes to your ABC court, code enforcement officer, which is Bob Stewart. So that money is being well spent. It's, it's, it's not that we're throwing it to the wind at all. That money is being well spent. Mr. Lewandowski, I think you have a few little items you wanna go over.
Uh, I'll just bring up the US alcohol sales brings in ninety billion dollars a year for the US. I've talked to different cities' mayors, and I asked about their, you know, Sunday sales. Uh, and prosperous, you know, Sunday sales have added an extra fifteen hundred dollars in revenue for the city for the first quarter. When Louisa went wet, they generated new million, two million dollars to help pay for Dina projects in town. And Paico, dom, you know, Paico's dominating alcohol sales because they're restaurants. Most restaurants try to, most restaurants try to make alcohol sales from thirty percent of their revenue. Uh, this will generate revenue for the police department. Allowing Sunday sales will also allow for restaurants and stores to generate taxes for the police department to purchase new weapons, cruisers, police equipment. Instead of the city having to raise taxes, we want to actually try to lower the taxes. If we grow our economy, we can grow more revenue, which gives the, the city more money to complete more projects. If our economy is growing, more jobs will become available. These sales are more than just some added cash for the city, they're a beginning of a chain of events that would be better for our town. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Now, we want to make it perfectly clear to the media that this is not a personal or religious issue to us. This is strictly an economical issue.
Business.
It's business.
Well, if we're gonna grow, we're gonna have to do it. There's no use for us to sit back and let the counties around us...
We've been told that.
And they've already...
We've been, we've been told that.
And, and I'm glad you, you made the point that you made.
Public discussion's always good. Public discussion's always good.
I wanna make it clear, I was against this in the beginning, uh, but I, I changed my mind over last week, because I've talked to a lot of people away from here. I eat in a lot of restaurants that serve alcohol. I don't drink, I don't condemn anybody that does. It's for economic development, and that's what, if we're gonna move as a community, we cannot keep restaurants from coming here if there's a chance that they'll come here for Sunday sales, we need it.
Okay.
Jobs is what we need here. We have no more code severance tax.
Well put.
We have to grow our city.
Yes, we do.
Whatever it takes. That's our job right here. That's our job.
The bottom line is simply this. We have sat here for the past few years, I'm not gonna mention the number of years by any means, we've sat here for the past few years, and everybody has passed us by.
That's right.
That's what they've done. There are two issues talking to the property manager that has taken over with the selling of the plaza. There are two issues out there as to the reason that we don't have any of the higher-end restaurants. Number one is you do not have a red light at the Wendy's turnoff. Number two is the Sunday sales. So if we want to grow as a city, and we want the same things and the same opportunities that every other city up and down this big sandy has, we're gonna have to start moving.
You've got to look at, I've talked to a friend of mine in Ashland. Look at how many years and how much money the city of Ashland lost, oh, actually, because of no alcohol sales on Sundays, or because people moved crossing the river to go to Ironton. And the same thing for Louisa. My God, when I was fifteen, we were going to Fort Gay on Sunday.
Oh, I thought.
Because you didn't have to worry about getting carted over there.
Yeah.
They'd sell anybody.
Thank you.
But it's so true. I mean, and, and I, that's jokingly, but look at the hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, the city of Louisa lost...
No question.
For people going across the river on Sundays.
No question.
We'd drive to Mount Sterling to buy six beers.
Oh, yeah, or a hazard.
Or the hazard. Cary County made a living off people in Johnson County forever.
Oh, God.
It's a long drive. But this is...
We're 2017, and like I said, I don't condemn anybody that drinks it. My God, you couldn't fill this room up with what I've drank, and I'm not proud of it.
But being from eastern Kentucky, that was pretty much part of life here.
Yeah, it was part of it.
You couldn't take it home, you had to drink all whatever you bought.
[laughing]
So that ended up everybody getting drunk. But you talked to nine, Mike, I wanna ask you a question. If you stopped a car with a person drinking, would you much rather smell alcohol on that guy's breath, knowing he's been drinking, as to maybe see a needle in the car, and you have no contest? Exactly.
But with all that said...
I've talked to, I've talked to retired state troopers, and they tell you the same thing. They would tend to one rather stop somebody with alcohol on their breath as, as to suspect them for being on drugs, 'cause it'd take three or four of them to handle somebody on drugs.
And they got worried about hepatitis C with the needles.
We, we have a much...
That's one step for him, though.
But that's our problem here is drugs.
We have a much greater problem...
Yes.
...with opioid than without alcohol.
And with all, every bit of that said, I still, you know, respect the opinion of anybody...
I do, too.
...who doesn't want to vote for it, and I know you all do, too.
No, no question. We do.
Absolutely.
And we're still gonna work together.
And that's it. It's not personal, it's not personal. We need to run this as a business.
Exactly.
And sometimes, you, when you're in politics, and I guess we are...
We are in politics.
I hate to say it that way, but we are.
I agree.
That you lose touch with people if you don't see them every day, and it's good to kinda get, you know, the input of, of how everyone feels about it.
I'm sure there's gonna be people nail-me to the cross after the comments that I've just made, but I've got big shoulders, I can handle it better.
No, and I mean, we all feel that way, and we all want what's best for Paintsville, and I think everybody out there...
Exactly.
If you didn't, you shouldn't be on this council.
That's exactly right.
If you're on this council for anything else besides that, you need to leave.
I think it's great that we can talk about it.
I mean, that's bottom line, that's my opinion.
I bet my opinion's right.
You're not here for bettering our city and growing our city. You're bettering this city. You, you don't leave down here, that's all we're into. And if it's me, I'll leave, I promise you that.
I told you this was a good council.
I may have to leave though, if I'm done.
Did I not?
Well, y'all be able to disagree and get along and go right on.
Exactly.
I don't hope anything against you.
We will.
I don't either. All right, so the first reading has passed.
Yes.
Item number five, we have a presentation from Ms. Laura Pack on the Trail Town certification, and let me add too, uh, and I hate to get on these soapboxes, I really do, but I'm going to anyway. We have to understand that people like Ms. Laura Pack, and people like Ms. Kay Hall, and our Chamber of Commerce people, and our tourism people, and everybody, they better start, I'm, I'm not gonna say they need, I'm gonna tell you, they better start working together. I'm just gonna make that statement. Ms. Laura?
Do you want me to stay back here, ma'am?
Honey, you do whatever you wanna do.
I've made the presentation all over town, and I had not had the opportunity to come
and talk to you all, and I wanted to make sure that it wasn't by any, any way, you know, that I was trying to exclude the city council, it's just, it's been such a busy time this last few months, trying to get the ball rolling again, getting everything going. We have reinvigorated our application for, to be a certified Kentucky Trail Town. What that means is that if we can achieve this designation, then we will have, there are only fifteen towns in Kentucky that are certified Kentucky Trail Town. What happens when that happens is the Office of Adventure Tourism starts taking up some of the slack for advertising. When we're talking about advertising dollars being one to one hundred and fifty-three, for every dollar you spend, you get back a hundred and fifty-three dollars in return. That's pretty significant. The, uh, the main factor when, when I got interested in doing this, at that time, I was a tourism commissioner. I've since resigned that, and resigned my, my presidency of Main Street so I could concentrate on this, 'cause it is a boatload of work. It's a lot of work. They, they make it hard to get that designation so that towns will come and build in the community and really apply themselves toward doing what needs to be done with the designation. So, um, at this point, we, we started this process a few years ago with the Dawkins Line. There was never a connector that was able to be established from the town and where the auxiliary services would be to the trail, to the Dawkins Line Trail, that was acceptable to the state. They wanted safe for families to walk, safe for families to bicycle, and there just wasn't that connector. In recent years, been using the, the river more with the paddle fest and everything, and it's just, it's epidemic how much people love to be on the water, kayaking, canoeing, and doing the paddle sports. You don't have to be the most physically fit person in the world to get in the kayak and get on the river and enjoy yourself. It's a very family-oriented, it's a very millennial-oriented, and those are our market folks, those are those, the target audience that we're trying to pull in here with the adventure tourism. So if we can get this designation done, we can bring in our share of the fourteen billion dollars that Kentucky Tourism made this past year. That was my motivation. Fourteen billion dollars of revenue is made by tourism. We should be getting our share of that, and the hot ticket right now is adventure tourism. They want to kayak, they want to climb, they want to zip line, they want to get out and, and enjoy the physical parts of enjoying nature. So if we can capture, um, if we can get that designation, we stand a greater chance to capture that, that large market with those large dollars, and we definitely need that here, our economy needs that. We have been working, the mayor has been very, very gracious in just kinda turning us loose and letting us just go at it full speed, and I appreciate that so much.
You're more than welcome.
Uh, we've been working with Mayor Les Stapleton in Prestonsburg, that is continuing that paddle, paddle fest and the paddle sports. We're trying to bring the timed race here, it's already scheduled for the spring, and the weather didn't quite right, but we would need more of that. Adventure Tourism has grant dollars that were left on the table last year because not enough people applied. So if we can get that developed, you know, here in the next eight, six to eight months, we can apply for that money and bring the money here and start bringing those, the timed water sports here, which brings an incredible amount of folks with it. When all those folks come, part of the Trail Town thing is that it needs to be a total package. You've got to have support and services for those people, they can't stay on the river twenty-four seven. It means more restaurants, it means more lodging, it means more auxiliary services, outfitters, it, it's a lot of business can come with that. So, um, we're continuing to work with Mayor Les. On the nineteenth, we have our next Trail Town meeting at the museum. We are also working with Lawrence County and their mayor, Harold Sloan, they just got a huge grant for their River Walk, um, they're gonna develop that. They're very excited about us partnering with them and using this connected trail, as is Mayor Stapleton. I spoke with Mayor Scott today, Andrew Scott, he's very excited about that, they're building a launch there in their city park. When we get this all connected, they might come and stay one day if just one town was doing it, but when everybody's doing it, and it's a regional thing, they could be here for a week or more. That means we capture more of those, those tourism dollars. So the, the motivation is economic.
Yeah.
And secondly, quality of life. It doesn't fix the brain drain, but it sure doesn't hurt it when you got more things to keep young people cute.
Absolutely.
And folks will say, tourism jobs, tourism jobs, you know, those are all, those are all service jobs, tertiary jobs. Not so. In the state, there are over a hundred and eighty-six thousand tourism jobs, and if you get on KTIA, Kentucky Tourism Industry Association, look at their stats, they break it down. Those jobs are broke into a pretty good mix of higher management-type positions, all the way down to the service and tertiary. So it can benefit us amazingly, it can bring in a lot of money here, and the tax revenue, that stays in your local government, so it's, uh...
Plus, the Trail Town spends off other economic businesses also.
Oh, my gosh, all the time. And, uh, just to comment on that Sunday sales, tourism, adventure tourism, those are weekend, weekend businesses. When folks come to town from, from other areas, they're gonna expect amenities that they find in other areas.
That's right.
Uh, I don't have to drink a beer with them, but they may want one.
You are, little town's unique, of all the towns you mentioned, we're the only one that's got a creek running through the middle of it.
Right into the Midwest.
Make you come right down this river and paddle right up, and tie their bough off, and go to either motel they wanted to, or any restaurant they wanted to.
Far as I'm aware, we have one of the best lakes in this area.
Oh, we've got, we've got so many good things going for us. The Dawkins Line, we've got Paint Creek, we're developing that, you know, adding to the boardwalk, building a kayak and canoe launch where they can easily get in and out. We just have a, a lot of things going for us, and I would encourage you all to come out to the meeting on the nineteenth and see where you fit in. It's all volunteer, there's no, there's no chiefs, just a whole lot of Indians.
What county?
It's at six-thirty at the Country Music Museum on the nineteenth, and at that meeting, we'll have our Adventure Tourism State Director this week will be here, also Representative Wells will be here, the mayors from Colrun Village, Prestonsburg, and Louisa will be here. It'll be a good time to, just taking the discussions that are going on and see where you fit in, where you might could, could help with, and, uh, I encourage anybody with ideas, you know. We went and saw folks in Morehead this past week, Justin has been so active in just taking this, and they're interested in bringing some of their programs here and trying to get things going entrepreneurially. We're gonna have a bid and breakfast symposium with the Kentucky Association of Bid and Breakfast, try to, you know, get the information out to folks and see if they want to try that venture. And the old saying, you know, for build it, they'll come. We just had a big one.
That's right.
And I appreciate y'all's time, and, and...
Thank you.
On the Facebook page, it's the Paintsville Trail Town Certification Committee, and I would encourage you to like the page, go on there, keep, we keep posting updates and what we got going on. We're painting City Hall this next Saturday, completely with volunteers.
And that's the key, is working together.
And, and volunteerism, that spirit of everybody wanting to make a better... And, uh, and of course, I'm, I'm on that Facebook page, and I know the phone numbers right there calling, and I'll help in any way I can get involved. I appreciate you, thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate you, nice presentation. Number six on the agenda, we got the second reading of the ordinance adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2017-2018, whereas an annual budget proposal has been prepared and delivered to the legislative body, and whereas the legislative body has reviewed such budget proposals, and modifications have been made accordingly. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Paintsville follows, section one, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, is hereby adopted as attached. Section two, this budget ordinance shall be administered by the executive... Section two, this budget ordinance shall be administered by the executive authority as prescribed and set forth in Kentucky revised statutes. Section three, the detailed operating budget is adopted by reference for administration and accounting purposes. Section four, the above ordinance was given for the first reading on Ms. Vergey.
Eighth of May, maybe?
May?
May eighth, I believe.
May eighth, twenty seventeen. And the second reading, of course, is tonight. Section five, this ordinance shall be in effect immediately after it is passed and published as required by law. I need a motion, yes, other?
I'll make a motion to accept the order.
A second.
All in favor?
We gotta have a roll call.
You gotta have a roll call. Thank you, Ms. Vergey.
Tim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Patricia?
Jim?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
What is the monetary number, do you have the monetary number for that?
I do, and I knew you was gonna ask me that, didn't I? Just gotta find it, brother, just give me a little bit of time here. All right, do you just want the subtotal expenses, is that what you want?
The total budget, the value, the total budget that you have.
Okay, then you want the subtotal expenses, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, the fiscal year budget for sixteen seventeen was eight million, one sixty-seven, nine sixty-five. Well, then you come right up here. I'm sorry. Total expenses for sixteen seventeen. Have you got that marked out? What you wrote down, you got that marked out? Total, total expenses for sixteen seventeen was eight million, six sixty-three, two hundred. Am I reading the right one, Kim? Thank you. Total expenses for seventeen eighteen. Eight million, seven eight-four, one four-three. And of course, I'm assuming if anybody wants to look at the budgets, they can contact you all, correct? Okay, Ms. Vergey, you've got that approved?
Yes.
We good with that?
Good to go.
Uh, items seven and eight, uh, Jeff Baldwin, I'm sorry, Mr. Baldwin, wanted to be here for those, and that's gonna be some amendments to the property maintenance codes that we need to get done, and then an ordinance relating to the code enforcement board so that we can attempt to put a little more teeth into holding these people accountable for their properties. But Mr. Baldwin wanted to be here for that one, so if you don't mind, we'll just go ahead and table those two, is that okay?
Yeah, I think we need a legal.
Yes, we do. I agree with you, Ms. Sarah. Uh, next on the agenda is a presentation of quotes for insurance renewal, and girls, am I allowed to say this, that? I gotta put up with, I gotta put up with you all day anyway. You were allowed to accept different quotes this year, correct?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, pardon.
That's all right, pardon, and it doesn't bother me while I'm putting, either.
I'm glad.
Tried that before, haven't you?
So your different quotes this year actually came out to do pretty good for us, correct? Am I correct when I say that?
Yes.
Okay. Quotes, do you all have those in front of you, city council members? So was there four quotes or just three, Ms. Kim?
Well, one of them is Sure Partners, and then Maverick Insurance, they committed a quote, and they have, uh, Maverick has EMC, and then Sure Partners has quoted, uh, One Beacon, Kentucky League of Cities.
Okay, so, so this expiring WSI policy is what we had last year, correct? All right, the numbers for the expiring policy for last year was three hundred and seventy thousand, one thirty-four, forty-six. Is that correct? Uh, One Beacon? Is that the next one, came in at two eighty-two, one fifty-eight, twenty?
Yes.
Do you wanna make any comments about that one?
No.
Are you sure? Kentucky League of Cities came in at three fifty-six, one fifty-sixty-six? And Maverick Insurance came in at two seventy-six, one eighty-eight? Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you want us to accept one of these tonight, Ms. Kim, Ms. Jamie? I'm gonna make a recommendation, we accept Maverick, them being the lowest bid, the lowest bid on insurance. You'll have to have a motion and a second, you need a roll call on that, Ms. Vergey?
I'll make a motion, we accept Maverick's, um, insurance proposal.
Who's seconded?
Half and half.
Okay.
All in favor? Opposed. Now I need to open it up to council. I'm sorry, yeah, have you read over your, uh...
Yes.
Uh...
The sirens did.
Open bids to sirens?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it meets all of our specifications, and I would recommend that you wore it to Sirens for Cities.
Okay, that's a smart lady, so she recommends that we accept this bid. You want it back?
Vergey, I'm gonna make a copy of this and Gary's gonna bring it to you tomorrow, because there's just one.
That's behind him.
Well, we gotta vote on it first, I'll hand it back, just wait right there.
Okay.
Okay, I need a motion.
Accept the bid.
All in favor?
Who's seconded?
Opposed? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Open to council.
Oh, wait a minute, then.
Now what are we doing? My Lord.
We gotta do that one.
Yes, we do. Ms. Kim? Uh, project planning, administrative services, contract agreement cover?
Yes, this is for, uh, the big sanity I asked to help administer Carter Lane, Regina was the planner, and Libby is helping to administer doing the administrative work, and this is just a contract agreement for that. And on your cover page, it shows the total cost, it shows the federal payer, the state payer, and the local payer. Would you think you also agree that it's all up to the mayor to sign the contract?
Then why can't you just sign the contract?
All in favor? Opposed? Ms. Vergey said we've got one more thing, correct?
And I, how are we doing, how are we doing all that? We're going forward, we're gonna do it, if that's okay?
No.
You have a what? Yeah, let's go ahead and do that, then we'll get this last one out of the way.
I'll make a motion, we'll get to air conditioning fixed.
I thought we had a new one down there.
We supposed to have. All right.
Saving money.
Ms. Regina?
Too bad. See, we have our, my Carter Lane friends are here tonight, I just wanted to let you know that they have finished the geotechnical drilling, the drilling there, and they need to look, to watch that for two weeks. They just need, there's a monitoring period for two weeks, and as soon as that is finished, then the engineers can finalize their design. So we're really close, actually, they have to be finished by eight, nine, August the ninth, everything has to be finished. At that point, we'll, they'll take the final design, we'll go to FEMA for their approval, and then we'll start phase two, which is the, the purchasing and then the, actually doing the mitigation on the property. So, um, there's no extension for this grant, so they have to finish by eight, nine. So August the ninth is only, what, six, eight weeks away, is this? Yeah, so...
At least you've got a date.
Yeah, so, um, and, uh, there's a new engineer on the, uh, W. Hunt left summit, and Mike Hill will be taking over the project, and he'll probably be meeting with you all pretty soon. Have you all met him yet, Mike Hill? So Mike Hill's the new engineer at the summit, Joey left for a different job, and, um, I talked to Libby today, I want, she was able to be here, and I wanted to make sure we gave you all an update. So, um, the last thing that she advised me was that we're on schedule, everything's going on schedule with the timeline of the grant, so...
So, and, and they're still saving our end house was involved in, it's not an extract that long?
She did not, uh, talk to me about that. Uh, that will be completely worked out in this last few weeks of the final design. They have to wait on that drilling and the report to do their finalization of the, of the engineering design, and that design is the mitigation that actually removes the slide and leaves the property safe.
I would say they've gotta wait to see how much it moves before they make that kind of decision, wouldn't you?
I don't know how they do that.
Yeah, well, with that drilling that they're doing, they'll be able to tell how that it, how things are shifting.
Yeah.
How the land is shifting, they'll have a good report on that, and then that'll tell them, and plus it gives them, uh, feet, the numbers of feet of dirt that have to be moved, and that helps with us to get the most accurate cost if I know when the amount of dirt, volume of dirt that will have to move to do the mitigation.
My only objection is as soon as you do find out some, it's something, right?
Yes.
Just the little landowners who know.
Oh, yeah.
You know about everything, oh, they'll come and rains, I pray that they're okay.
Gary does too.
Yeah, yeah. I know a lot of people do that.
Yeah, so, so everything's going on schedule and doing fine with Carter Lane, and we'll continue to give you updates, Libby's still your administrator, she's gonna be here tonight. I wanted to make sure that we give the Carter Lane folks as well as the council an update.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Regina, and we, and, and, and we do understand, Dale, you all suffered for a long time, and we're trying to get this thing going as quick as we can.
You know, that's something we need to look at, once they start extracting that dirt, we need a place for that dirt.
I wonder where it's gonna go, I guess they...
There's gonna be, undoubtedly, how many millions of yards coming out of there?
It, it, um, we actually had to, uh, locate a place that was already permitted, so I'm, I'm not really sure where that is, but, you know, it has to go to a permitted location, and that's already been as part of it, that'll come out of the plan, but that was in the preliminary engineering.
The way she said, it's already been permitted, the place they've already designated, the place is permitted.
Yeah, we had to have it in the preliminary engineering, we had to have a place that we were gonna take to that was permitted, so...
That's not one of the Louisa's, is it?
No.
It's going to Fort Gate, Tommy.
I just wish they would start moving dirt and sand. And it gets muddy and nasty, jeez.
Yeah, it's gonna be...
It will be a mess.
The permitted places, but I just don't really know the location.
It will.
Exactly.
There's only a couple of permitted places.
Well, now Jim should know all about that kinda stuff.
They let it be put in the permitted area, Dale knows that, probably around the core foot at the bottom of it, what's going there, like the drainage and all that.
And that's a good thing, because that way you're not creating another disaster of the dirt where it doesn't belong, so it's already, you know, the, the volume of dirt that they expect to have is, they already know that this, this location is permitted to accept that, that amount of dirt, so, and it won't cause any problems to any other people who live around it, if you just start putting dirt somewhere.
It's amazing what FEMA can do when we couldn't get a four oh four when we were trying to...
It'd take forever to get, get a hot bill from it.
I hope FEMA is so cooperative about doing something about flood.
Okay, we've got one more item to cover. We need to, what'd you call, close the books? We need to close the books. Whereas the city of Paintsville adopted an official budget for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty seventeen, ending June thirty twenty eighteen, and whereas the fiscal year will end on June thirty. That says two thirty seventeen. Is that a typo? And whereas entries for closing the fiscal year need to be made, now therefore be it resolved that the city treasurer be authorized to make the necessary entries to close the books for twenty sixteen seventeen fiscal year. I need a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Tom, I will second that, to close the books.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Now I can open it up to council. Jim, we are.
I mean, anytime soon, because I'm hearing a lot of people complaining about it, I mean, big time.
Yeah, yeah, we are.
Third Street needs it to...
No, I know, but that's state highway. That's state, I know, that's what I'm saying, I was just talking about Main Street, I mean, there's a lot of traffic down that street.
Hey, Ms. Kim?
I noticed we got a...
Can I tell, can I tell the public, Ms. Regina, Ms. Kim, about our sidewalks?
Yeah, yeah.
We, we, we got, we got a four hundred thousand dollar grant for sidewalks. And I'm assuming that's gonna run from the doctor's office down there to Euclid on both sides of Main Street, is that correct?
And then possibly across Veteran Bridge, see how far we can go with the money.
And possibly across Veteran Bridge.
Can we put some, can we put something on the end?
Okay, so Jim, yes, we are gonna blacktop that part of Main Street.
Well, I'm gonna talk about the whole thing, if it, if it just go from the library to the red light, it would really help, you know?
Got you.
That, that much would really...
We, we've already got that planned.
Oh, about that hole up front, have y'all?
Well, I'm kinda afraid to do anything up there.
You don't wanna be perceived as a favor test, do you?
Yeah, that'll be last.
I think the baskets look good there that they put up this time, or if they really...
Yeah, and I'm gonna tell you something, if they don't turn into big beehives, like Joe Keaton said, he said he wanted them beehives, then Joe Keaton's gonna get mad at, so we need to get them turned, that's exactly right. And then there was something else I was gonna mention, we have got a, we turned in a, Ms. Jamie, we turned in a request to the governor's discretionary fund, is that correct, back a few months ago, that we think that we may, that we may receive, that's, will take care of a lot of blacktop. Hopefully.
We've got a lot of state...
I just wanted to throw that out, because if it gets in the paper, somebody's gonna have to read it and maybe it'll get them moving a little bit on it. That's a hint?
So I'll make sure it's a hint.
Okay.
Also, I'd like to congratulate Johnson Central students for their conference this weekend in Wisconsin. I mean, the FPS team finished third in the world, uh, Central Elementary won grand champions of York Castle, finished third, and tonight, thanks, they're having a parade for them, so if you guys can be out there, you're gonna have to support our academics. I think they already did that. I heard it. They're having some kinda cookout for them tonight.
Well, they are very deserving of whatever they get. They are very deserving of that.
A little county of twenty thousand people and, and the academics that come out of this county from both schools is astronomical, it is.
I agree totally. Open it up to the floors, anybody from the floor got anything? Yes, Ms. Hall?
I want to thank the mayor and Doug Campbell for our water faucet, and I haven't paid any attention to another, our community gardens, we have beans coming up, uh, squash, tomatoes, and peppers, right now we've got four raised beds out there, and it's for the kids, once we get the other four built, uh, Rotary has already agreed to put a stainless fence around it, just to keep the animals out and all the people, uh, but, uh, I appreciate
Thank you.
Hopefully, much needed.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Jerry, I was, uh, I was, I just bought a house in this town, uh, Pith Mountain, and, uh, we brought a business, we're trying to bring a business in this town, and, uh, and I went through all the steps for my LLCs, I've got everything, even a county business license, but I would deny the city business license, and I'm trying my best to bring, you know, this company into this town, and, you know, and hopefully bring some jobs, you know, some jobs that our people's coming out of college too, and, uh, but I'm just trying my best to get a city business license up where I live at. I, I do have a big shop... I, I do have a big shop behind my house, you know, I do want to sell online, well, email back and forth. So traffic is really not an issue for what I do. Because I do signs and graphics, so I'm owner, operator of Eastern, East Kentucky Signs of Earl. And I'm trying my best, like I said, just to get a city business license where I can, you know, stay in this town. You know, because I just give $250,000 cash for a home.
Yeah, so...
And I'm trying to stay here.
The problem is going to be zoning laws, is that what you're trying to say?
Well, that was one thing with the zoning on it, you know, but, but yet, you know, you look above us at Hidden Valley, you know, we've got these apartments up there, you know, and that's, and that's privately owned. I mean, it's not state, state owned. So I mean, if it's just a residential zone, as what I was told, then apartments is not even supposed to be there. Because of, and because of traffic and everything, they said, well, that's one reason why I couldn't get my license. And, and also, on regards to Hidden Valley, you know, my little girl, and, and, you know, was nine years old, there's many young kids up there, we really need speed.
You need speed bumps. Yep, you do.
I mean, there's, there's cars goes up and down there, I mean, I can, I pulled my video camera up to show you any day you want to pick, car speeding 70, 75 mile an hour and down through there.
Well, I'll tell you what you do.
Yes, sir.
You, 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 you get those residents together and you all show me where you want them speed bumps?
Yes, sir.
Because there's one thing that we've got to protect, that's our children.
Exactly.
Okay, huh? Okay, well, you just get in touch with me and I can promise you, you'll have speed bumps. Now, it's just accorded to how high you all want them?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
That's the problem with speed, the clouds are...
You know, I showed you all, I showed you some pictures, I sent you some, and I know they're more expensive to do.
They are.
But it is wonderful. It's Northern Kentucky and the speed bumps, it's, it's almost like a roller coaster ride, I loved it. I just want to drive around.
Mark them, the problem is the snowblades, when they come in, it's, you know, take off the snow.
You wouldn't have to worry with it, because if you do it this way, and I know they're more expensive, Bill, but I don't know how much.
Let's do this first. Let, let's, let's get them taken care of temporarily, okay? And then if, then if we have to adjust them, we'll adjust them, okay? And then as far as his business is concerned, Bob Stewart went through a list of things that you need to come in and sit down with Bob. Just come in City Hall, sit down with him, he can explain to you exactly what you need to do and they may be, I'm not going to promise you this, because Bob said they may be able to rezone it or they may not.
Yes, sir.
So...
I was just trying to go through the proper steps.
Right.
You know?
But now the best thing for you to do is come in and sit down with him, one-on-one, and let him explain to you step by step what has to be done. Exactly, yep. We, we, we want you to too, so, but, you know, we've got to go through the channels, but... Okay, but just come in anytime you want to.
And thank you on the speed bumps too, because I mean, they're needed bad. And more an extra for trouble if we can get up through that, so, but that's all I've got, so.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to put Maverick in as our insurance agent of record?
Yes, Maverick goes in as the insurance agent of record. I think we ran into a little bit of a problem the last time we didn't do it that way, correct?
We did one other time, yeah, we found out.
Okay. Counsel, thank you. It was a good meeting, it was too long, but it was a good meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.